Order.
Approve of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
Uh, real quick, uh, I'd like to add one item to the, to the discussion. We can do it at the end. I'd like for the planning commission to discuss if they would like to recommend any amendments to the size of the planning commission. Currently, uh, it's supposed to be seven members, uh, but we've had two vacancies for a while, uh, just discussing if you want to keep it seven, find two new members or resize it to five.
Should we put that up there on number seven?
Yeah, between six and seven after it's.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Motion's been made and approved the agenda with the addition of number 10 somewhere. Considering the number of board members.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Election of the Planning Commission Chairperson and Vice Chairperson for 2024.
I think Tom's doing a great job as chairperson, so I would recommend him to continue.
I'll second that. Good. All right. Any, anything else? Anybody else? Did you make a motion?
Yes, you did. That was a motion, yes. Okay. Uh, motion was made in second to.
To have you as the chairperson.
And not to vote against me? Not to be a candidate? Okay. Motion's been made in second to have Tom Stifter for chairperson for the next term. Any comments? Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Uh, vice chair, need a recommendation?
I'm gonna recommend Michael Summerfield.
I'll second it.
Okay. The way we could do it is nomination cease, but motion's been made in second to approve. Approve Michael Summerfield as Vice Chairperson for the planning zoning for the next duration. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And now the speech. Acceptance speech, Michael?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Approval of the minutes from September 5th, 2023, Planning and Zoning Meeting, Planning Commission Meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes of September 5th, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have a public hearing, but first we'll let, uh, got anything on this?
Yeah, do you want me to kind of go through it?
Yes, please.
All right. And I'll touch on item six too, which is the site plan review. They're kind of related, obviously. Um, so as I do my little speech here, I'll kind of be for both the next two items, but to start with, we have a request, uh, for a site plan review for existing, the old fire station building there at 400 Ash Avenue, and it's proposed to be remodeled into a commercial structure. And as we went through the site plan, we realized that there's, uh, gonna be short some off-street parking spaces. So we also have a variance, which is actually the public hearing that we're doing tonight, to reduce the number of off-street parking spaces, uh, for a commercial use, um, from the required 30 spaces to eight spaces. Um, so once that variance would be approved, it'll allow the site plan to be approved based on what's out there. And up on the screen there is the kind of the parking layout. Uh, there are more spots available, um, in the near vicinity that, uh, as you can see, some of them crouch into the public right of way. There's also spots on the south side of, um, uh, fourth, uh, fort right here, uh, some spots along there as well. Those are in the public right of way or partially in the right of way. So they technically don't count for off-street parking spaces, but they are in the vicinity for, for this area or for, I guess, for anyone that in the public that wants to park there, then go somewhere else they can too. But, uh, with that being said, just kind of touch on this, the building itself is existing. Uh, it's 4,868 square feet in size, and, uh, there's gonna be five individual commercial units in there that range from size, uh, from basically 844 square feet, or I think there's one at 675 up to 1,544 square feet. So these commercial units would be kind of for different, uh, commercial uses. Not sure the specific use going each one. But based on that size, that, that's the required parking spaces that are needed out there. Property zone was recently zoned, uh, for commercial and the comp plan was amended to guided for commercial. Uh, it used to be public because it was the old fire station, and in anticipation of the property being sold and redeveloped, um, those changes were made a year and a half ago, I want to say approximately, has gone through met council, so all that approval's in place. Um, because the building's existing, there's really no zoning issues from a setback or square footage or things like that to look at, 'cause everything is basically existing at this. Uh, neighboring uses in the general vicinity are, are basically singer, single-family detached dwellings, um, kind of to the north and to the east, and then there's some commercial and single-family sort of to the west and, uh, south, which is a downtown area. And this property is also zoned for downtown, which is adjacent, you know, to other areas. So, um, as part of a variance, there's obviously, um, different things that you look at as far as, um, criteria and different things like that. Uh, one of the items for the site plan review that the variance would be approved, so there are some conditions touching on that. As far as the building itself, uh, there will be, you know, remodeled, so that all the new, um, items that go along with the building will meet, you know, building code and, um, commercial standards in that nature. Uh, there's no landscaping being proposed at this time. Uh, could be discussed, uh, you know, if, if something's needed at that point. Um, there's a trash enclosure being composed kind of on the, sort of the east side of the property. Um, I think it's adjacent to the last parking stall. Uh, that would be an enclosed, um, fence, that kind of red area right there, so that they can get the dumpster out of there and pick that up for trash. That would meet city requirements. Um, city engineering comments, there's a, uh, memo or an email dated March 25th of this year, and it says they confirmed existing water and sewer service for both buildings are both four inches and should be adequate for the proposed use. And it talks about the E R U, which is 2.35 for the, the calculations for the building permit and things like that. Um, you know, there's some miscellaneous provisions that would be like lighting, glare, you know, different things, uh, in the zoning ordinance that you would take a look at. Other than that, uh, there are sidewalks along, um, Ash Avenue to the west that go north and south, and that kind of connect the downtown with everything going north of there, so this property would be adjacent to that. And, um, with that being said, I guess that's about it, but I'll take any questions if you have any. Yes.
Uh, why is there no parking spaces on the west side of the building?
Why isn't there? Uh, because to access that, it doesn't really have a, uh, access for vehicles. There's no way we can get access off of, uh, uh, Ash Avenue, except State Highway 25, so they could not come in from that way. And if you came in from the south, there's really no way for cars to turn around in a reasonable manner and get back out. So that's just gonna remain.
Fire department had access to that, didn't they?
Uh, the 25, you mean?
Yeah.
No, no doors front the west side.
Hmm?
No doors front the west side.
The entire west. Doors were on the west side?
No.
There was a garage door.
Yeah, there was a garage door.
There was a garage door and an entrance.
Gone.
And.
Not on the new plan, but that's what we had.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, but because, uh, Ash Avenue, State Highway 25, there's no access allowed onto that roadway. So we're using the local roadway, which is Forest Street on the south side.
Could that be compared with the gas station uptown in Main Street, uh, right in the middle of town? Petro, uh, what is it? British Petroleum Station there?
Uh, when you say compared to, you mean from an access standpoint? I mean, it could be, um, in this case, there is access off Forest Street. Um, you know, you can kind of see on the picture, there's a striped area there, um, next to the northbound lane, and then you got the sidewalk. So you'd be crossing over that sidewalk in that striped area if they put access there. But with the state highway, that would not be allowed, you know, for parking like this shown on the south side.
Well, I was just wondering, because they park at that, at the gas station, they come off the highway and park on, on the west side?
Yeah.
So there is access there.
In this case, it wouldn't, it, it's not allowed through the state highway though, so.
So if you take the very west of the building, there's a line that lines up with that. Is there a parking stall to the west of that line?
Uh, no, there is not.
Is it too close to the intersection or is that?
It wasn't shown on the proposal, but you know.
Cause that, I mean, that'd be adding one, which.
You could add one there, yeah.
That's what I was kind of thinking. You could get as close to you could as to the hydrant. I don't know if it's one spot or two, but, but I didn't know if there was something, how much, how close do you get to the intersection? Cause of course they're gonna have to back out and.
I mean, ideally, you want to stay as far away from the intersection as you can, because it's backing onto the, a public roadway, which isn't normal, but there are existing spaces like that in the town. Um, so, you know, could you go a little closer with one? I suppose you could.
Could there be something, and this, and this just popped up in my silly little head, anyways, to have a drive-through and then you'd only go out that way? If somebody wanted a coffee shop with a drive-through, would that be something in the future that'd be acceptable?
I mean, it's something that could be looked at, but once again, you'd have to go through them in that.
Right, but they'd be, they'd be going, they wouldn't be backing out, they would be.
Coming through and.
Coming through and going north, you know. Well, then the driving's on the wrong side. Actually, maybe, I'm sorry, that'd be the faster side driving, but you could come in too, so.
There is a, I mean, it is an exit right there.
On 25.
But as.
But you'd have to get approval to use it as a.
As a drive-up window, you'd have to come from the north and go south, so that would be the driver's side.
I got a question for Brad. Brad, the property line, you see where that red box is there, that dumpster thing?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the property line on the east side of that?
That is, and I might engineer, you might have to come back if that house moving it over a little bit.
No, I mean, is that the property line?
Yes.
It, it's, the property line isn't further closer to your house.
Or is it the alley?
That's about it right there.
Is it, is it the alley that?
At one time, there, there was an alley back there, and I don't know, did that get added to the house property or, or?
It shows up as part of.
So there's an alleyway which would be as wide as across the street would be. There would actually be another, probably another parking spot.
There is no alleyway. It was vacated some time ago.
But it belongs to the property for the fire station.
The fire station does own a little bit to the right of that red spot, probably, I don't know, eight feet maybe? If that, yeah.
Oh, I'm just juggling the lines, I guess.
Ideally, you want to keep your parking, you know, set back at least five feet from a property line. And, uh, if you go any closer than that, now you got setback issues with your parking, whereas right now it's fine the way it sits, so. There are some trees there too. I don't know if, in fact, those trees are not. No.
No, they're on.
A little bit further to the east, yeah.
Couple of comments to west there, parking on the west side, there'd be very difficult, it's such an angle there. I know people talk about the drive-through, like you said, it's the wrong side. I have a question for John. You say eight, but I count 13, or don't you count the ones?
Well, the ones that are, that are partially in the right of way are not technically counted. I mean, they can be used, don't get me wrong, but they're not, so when we're doing the variance, we're just doing it for all the ones that are just on the property 100%. So those are there and like, but when you're in the public right of way, they're not fully on-site. They're off-street, I guess, because they're partially on. I think the Zion Lutheran School has a similar situation that we dealt with.
That's what I saw.
Yeah.
That's what I was calling to.
Cause technically, the off-street parking is supposed to be 100% on your property, and those are not, so, so, you know. That's why we just did that.
Will there be lines, so people will actually park there?
Uh, striping, yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the conditions is to meet all the requirements, which include like striping and things like that, so.
So the, he'll actually have more parking, but we can't count it?
Can't legally, I mean, it's usable, but it's not legally counted. That's why the variance is at.
Okay, got it.
Eight versus 13.
Parking is what you're looking at?
Well, there's a few spots that are just on the.
No, but the spot where the like lines are.
Also across the street, that can be utilized.
Right.
Yep.
But it's not, it does belong to him, but it can be utilized.
Correct, because.
Public parking, yep. If you remember when the, uh, Mexican restaurant went through, they went through a parking variance, very similar, and it was looked at how many spaces were in the immediate area on, in the right of way that could be counted, even though they weren't counted, how many were there? So that's very similar to what we're talking about here. And I know in the downtown area, you know, there's kind of a different situation with parking, 'cause obviously a lot of the lots don't, can't accommodate that, so.
Uh, yeah, we know parking's a, an issue in the downtown area.
Well, it all depends on what kind of businesses, if there's businesses that go with appointments, that's different than walk-in business. If you have walk-in business, then you're far short of what you need for parking. It all depends on that. And, uh, we went through that with my wife's business. She had a, she had a business where it was by appointment, so we didn't have often, we didn't very often have problems with parking, because she had it regulated pretty much down to that there wouldn't be a problem, but sometimes you had unexpected walk-in business that would probably goof up the parking, and that all, only parking we had at that time was on Main Street or Ash Avenue. And, uh, we had two parking spots in the front. So, uh, I'm always kind of aware of the parking situation, because my dad had the grocery store in the 50s, in the 1950s on Main Street, which that building is now gone, and he only had two parking spots. And, uh, there was a business next door who, who owned the business, uh, and building, and also drove school bus. So when he got done parking, is, when he got done with driving school bus, I always parked it in front of my dad's store instead of front of his place. So I'm fully aware of the parking situation in this town in regards to doing business. It's not very good. And your grandfather had the same issues, so. That's, that's why I put things in question. I've been here a while.
One other point I'll make is on the west side of that building too, a lot of that concrete area is within the public right of way or the Highway 25 right of way. I think the lot line is very close to the building itself.
Actually, um, Nick and I went over that. It's not as far as the thing.
It's not, okay.
I think only 33 feet, and I called the state, and they said after that, it's up to the city.
Okay.
I was surprised, it was such a small right of way.
Yeah.
Are you saying from the center line, Brad?
Isn't that the same issue by you there, Tom? Isn't that, that's only 33 feet there, ain't it? Center point?
Um.
Up in that area?
I'm not sure how that worked out, but yeah.
I think it is. That's why that corner of your building is right on the property corner. Yeah, I guess, you know, there's nothing that we can really say that could be changed, and, uh, all we have to do is, I guess, accept it as it is, because it, uh, there's nothing else that can be done. If that's the way it's gonna be utilized, I mean, that's.
You have the option, when a business comes, if you see a lot of parking, you can say no.
Pardon?
You always have the option to say no to a business that would require a lot of parking.
You know.
So.
You know, you don't in Minneapolis. I mean, you go to a wedding in some place and they got five parking spots. Seriously, it's like, why, why are we so tight on that, you know, it's but.
Depends on like daytime businesses and as heavy as.
We're not the only downtown. I mean, Victoria has the same problem.
Oh, that's terrible.
I mean, it's.
Keep building apartments, right in, right in the, the business district. Yeah, I've been there. So, yeah, I don't know. Or we have to point, where does a motion to approve it, or what?
Oh, we gotta, the public hearing's gotta be opened, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we have some discussion there. We have things we all talked about. Um, so let's open the public hearing. Anything you guys want to talk about, or, or do we ask? I hate this part of it.
Probably things are pretty clear, right?
I know.
You got anything, Brad?
Okay, anything else from the public? We've closed the public hearing and then we vote on it? Okay, we'll use that formula.
Motion items, so the public hearing's for the variance, and then next item would be for the site plan.
Okay.
Do you want me to go through the conditions that were listed as well, or no?
I would think so.
I'll talk, touch on those real quick. So for the variance, there was, uh, a total of two conditions, uh, listed. Um, one is that a variance, uh, there's an expiration, and then there's a site plan review. Uh, for the site plan review itself, there was 12 conditions listed. Um, one is that the variance gets approved for the off-street parking, the billing design standards are met, which they are. Any signage has to meet the sign re, um, ordinance. Any lighting has to be directed away from adjoining properties, things like that. Uh, landscaping, it's, um, I should touch on this. It's required to plant five overstory trees, um, either on the property or their location determined by the city. That is technically a requirement based on the frontage in the code. So there are, I don't know, there's a couple trees on the north, some of the west, but I think, or the, yeah, east, I should say, but I think they're on, um, adjacent properties. Uh, another one would be noise and vibration. Any outdoor storage has to meet those requirements, the trash enclosure, um, which we talked about already. Uh, building permits required to do the, you know, all the work. Um, any other permits that might be needed, such as Carver County or state permits are required, uh, city engineer approval, and then the expiration of, um, site plan for a year, so. So I guess the only one I forgot to touch on was kind of that, um, overstory tree requirement. We had dealt with that out in the Shimcore Business Park. Sometimes they have a certain amount of furniture that are required to do a certain amount of trees. In this case, it was five.
I'll comment on that. I'm working on a plan right now, so you don't have it, you still working on it. But the landscaping will have pots, like flowers and different shrubs and stuff with a watering system. He said he won't touch it if you don't put a watering system in. He says it never works, they always die. And then he, he can put, uh, winter stuff in too, make a hook at the pots, so. Yeah, I didn't plan on cutting holes in the concrete for trees.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like there's enough space to put.
Right, no.
Trees at all.
Is that green stuff up there? Is that grass in between the parking lot and stuff? What is that green? Just the kind of what you maybe talked about, like those are flower boxes or whatever? Okay, so you have a little there, okay.
It might even come out into the west side a little bit, meaning that's not being used.
But there's quite an angle to that part of the, the, uh, concrete, isn't there? So I mean, it wouldn't even be good for table settings or, you know, patio type.
Somebody wanted to build a deck off that one end, that's a possibility.
Or level it somehow.
Well, yeah, you could, you build a deck, one side up. All right, we have a motion for, for the variance.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion's been made in second for a variance to reduce the number of off-street parking spaces required from 30 to eight. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we need a motion on the site plan review.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the site plan, subject to conditions.
Can I ask a clarification on the landscaping then? We're fine with the landscaping and the pots versus the.
On board with that?
Yep.
Can we get a second on that?
I'll second.
She was waiting to hear about the conditions.
Are we good? Okay, thanks. Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Need more discussion, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On, all opposed, motion carries.
Good job.
I need your support. All right, so, uh, number, we're gonna slip six and a half in there as far as reconsidering the number of planning commission members.
Thank you, Chair. So the board, uh, the planning commission is currently supposed to have seven members on it. Thomas Van Burge hopped off a couple plus years ago, and then Patty Lanting, due to her circumstances, she, uh, decided to no longer be a part of the planning commission, so we're left with two vacancies. Uh, a couple options we have, either is fine. If we want to fill those vacancies, we can go out, find commission members for them, or an alternative would be to recommend up to city council that the, uh, code, the city code be changed to change the size of the planning commission from seven to five. Seven just happens to be a popular number for planning commissions. It's generally what gets used, but there is no law that says you must have seven. Um, I think the Minneapolis one has 20-something members on it, uh, for reference. So they vary. Um, all the other boards and commissions of the city have five, even the city council itself has five. So the planning commission does stand out as the unique board, which has more than five with the city. So tossing that out there for discussion and how we'd like to proceed.
With a, with a board of seven is our quorum, four?
Yes.
So going to five, we'd have more flexibility on those.
Yep, you'd have three.
So we tried to gain two more, then newsletters.
No, there hasn't been any efforts on that front.
You haven't beat anybody off the front window to say no, we're full.
Yeah, I had to spray him with some water, like, not at this point.
Get in the back of the line, wait. Can't really say five to seven.
Can we, since we haven't really advertised for it very much, correct?
Right.
What if we tried, and then if we're really getting no responses, then we can revisit this at a future meeting to say that, you know what, maybe five is enough? I like that idea.
1976, I, we started the planning commission. I was a.
I wasn't even born yet.
And at that time, we welcomed people from neighboring townships.
Yep, that is still in the code.
Oh, I was, you know, I just thought I'd bring that up, because we haven't had any neighboring township members on the board for many, many years, and I don't know if the, the advertisement in which it was presented didn't include members from the townships, or it was just a thing that was left go to the side and. Because that is actually, they are part of the, they can be part of the planning commission.
Yes, they can. That's in the, uh, the code. It says it's not just city limits, it's surrounding townships as well.
Well, we could include that in the information, just how do we get it out to people that, can you tell? I don't know when the townships meet.
I have their contact information, since we have fire contracts with them.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't hurt. I mean, I'm open to just trying to see if there's a, if there's interest. If there's not interest, then maybe we make adjustments, or we just leave the vacancies and.
Do we wait for tables for a month or two, or whatever, however we're meeting? Um, try Facebook and newsletters and.
I want direction of some sort. Do you want me to pursue filling, or do you want to pursue going down to five? I, one way or the other, I just, I want to know what the direction.
Fill in.
Maybe we should, uh, look at what kind of results we have on, on new advertisement.
So pursue Philly, yeah.
Yeah.
Pursue Philly.
Go from there, if all of a sudden, there's no interest.
Perfect.
Yes.
Because we do, we do, uh, involve properties beyond our city limits, so there should be some say there by the township members, I, I would say.
That's the direction I was looking for.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Number seven is next meeting, Tuesday, May 7th.
At the commissioner's report, or?
That would be number eight, Leslie.
Where, did we have a commissioner's report?
That would be number eight.
Oh, the next.
You did so much scribbling on your paper, you can't tell.
My bifocals weren't working too good.
As of right now, I don't think we have anything that's pressing that would be on the agenda, so it could be canceled.
Could be canceled, very good.
Write that down.
So, we are trying to meet monthly, or we're available monthly?
I'll get.
If we have.
Yeah, sorry, I'll get advertisements out as quick as I can. Get that out probably early next week. And see what kind of response we get from Planning Commission. If we get a bunch of interest before the May 7th meeting, we'll certainly plan for a meeting, but if we're not getting too much, push it out, maybe another month to see if we can garner.
If a business owner lives out of town, would he be able? Pardon me? I don't know if I said that. I don't know if I said that.
Saying if someone lives in town should be saying someone lives outside the bounds, but owns a business in town.
Because you can have surrounding townships, like, does it have to be?
And we said residence.
A business owner who has a business within the city limits, but lives out of town.
Yeah.
We're talking about township board members specifically.
Because EDA can, EDA can have members that are not, that are not city members.
It's just a question.
It's a good question.
So, the Planning Commission shall consist of seven members appointed by the council among residents of the city and neighboring townships. So, whether or not they own a business is not specified, they must be residents of the city and neighboring townships.
Okay, I mean, if it says it, it's good.
Yep.
Okay, we got that. Number eight, commissioner's report. Anybody got anything to report?
Well, I got a comment to make, or maybe a question. I was wondering about, do we have anything on shipping containers in our ordinances?
As far as, are they allowed for storage, or what?
Yeah.
I know typically, I've looked at them as, you know, like, outdoor storage typically has to be screened if somebody's piling up, you know, pallets or whatever. Storage containers, a lot of times are looked at as outdoor storage, as long as they're screened in, like, the industrial areas, they can be used. I'm actually working in a different city right now, where they just allow shipping containers as permanent structures, but they have to meet building code, have a footings. And there is somebody doing a project where they're completely taking the storage container and making it into a structure, and they're downtown. And it actually turned out better than I thought, to be honest with you, so. He's spending more money than I thought he would, too, so.
I was just wondering, because we're, we're starting to accumulate some in the area, and if they're not, if they're not screened, it can be quite a eyesore, because they come in variances of colors.
Yeah, they should be screened.
Pretty strong colors.
When you say screened, what does that mean?
So, um, yeah, so they can't see them from, like, public right of way, or from, like, a residential property.
Say that again?
Let me just look at the exact language here.
Say that again about the residential property, just.
Yeah, so typically, you know, they would be allowed as, like, outdoor storage, and say, like, you know, Shimcore, you know, commercial park, business commercial. And if it's a backing up to, say, a residential neighborhood, you're supposed to screen any sort of outdoor storage in those areas from, like, residential neighborhoods. Now, there, it's kind of separated, but there are a few houses on the west side along, you know, 25 there. But let me just find this section of code while you guys are talking here, quick.
Yeah, I don't know if we have anything on it, but that, that'd probably be a work, workshop issue that we'd work on it for an intense period, just to get it all right, because I'm seeing them in car dealerships.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is because they are starting to pop up around a village, a city. It was a village when I was a youngster. But anyway.
Then they cut a road.
Anyway, they are popping up, and I, I think we should maybe have to look into some kind of control, or, you know, where you have situations where they're not screened, and they should be, maybe, you know, it depends on where they are. I know there was a while back, a couple of years ago, there was concern about somebody having a camping trailer on Main Street parked on their lot. Actually, it was their backyard, but it, because it was, the yard was facing the main street, people, there were some people concerned about him having a a camping trailer, which, to me, didn't look any worse than other camping trailers, but I think a container looks a lot worse than a camping trailer.
Yeah, so here's what the language says. It says, "All, in all districts, all material and equipment shall be stored within a building or be fully screened, so it's not to be visible from adjoining properties." And then if you go under the screening section, right after that, so outdoor storage, which I would consider what a storage container is, is uh, where is it? Should be, consists of a solid fence or wall that is 100% opaque and not less than six feet in height, or more than eight feet, or, or eight feet in height, so it shall be between six and eight feet, so. Shall be designed and constructed, so be, you know, harmonious with the principal structure. And then it's got some language about solar farm stuff in there. And talks about that landscaping, you know, such as trees, shrubs. Shall be on the right-of-way side of any screen, so if you have some of that, you can do a kind of a mixture. You know, there's also possibly you could put a berm in there and put stuff on top of the berm. So, basically, you're supposed to screen it 100%.
You know, I don't know, screening in some, in some situations would even be necessary, depending where it would be, but if it would be a match, a color match with the rest of the structures, where it wouldn't stand out so much, would probably be a starting point, rather than go into a whole bunch of little nitty-gritty.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Picky, little things that don't matter, such as trees and shrubs and everything else, I mean, it's.
I'd say color match would be a big, high on the list.
To me, the color is what makes them stand out. Structurally wise, they don't look that bad, they're not any different than these dumpsters we have in our industrial park.
Are these, I, I don't know, are they on residential?
We would have some kind of a limited ordinance where, you know, it would be some control of
Are they on residential properties, or what are they on?
Number, size, and color.
Where are they located? I don't even know. Are they on residential, or?
You know where they're.
I know where two are.
What's the zoning, I guess?
Commercial.
Commercial, okay.
And that, it's interesting, because it sounds like they are acceptable, and then as you read it from the neighbors, well, is it from the neighbors, or is it from the front edge of the road that are noticeable?
Yeah, so then there's another little section here, as I was reading, "Commercial and industrial screening." And it says, "All commercial, industrial uses abutting and/or adjacent to residential districts shall be provided, are required to provide screening according to this section." Then it talks about, like, greenbelt planting strips and that heath again, and fences and mixtures of stuff and all different that, so it does spell out.
That's an ordinance that you're, that you're working on.
No, this is the city zoning ordinance.
Oh, it is? Our city or?
Yes.
It is.
It's in your city zoning ordinance.
Pretty, pretty involved, though.
How many pages is that?
Uh, it's, it's section 152090 and 152091.
Maybe we could be sent a copy of that by our city administrator.
The city code is online.
Huh?
The city code is online.
It could be emailed to the commission, the Planning Commission, though.
Right, but if you can receive email.
In regards to that subject matter. Being us brought up at a meeting.
I think Les is right. I, I knew there was gonna be a come of time that somebody's gonna talk about it, and it may become a problem. And at that point, I, I mean, my eyes are open, I'm still looking around, I see a car dealership in Maconia has some visible from some road. A tire shop, maybe, in Maconia may have one. Eden Prairie, you could probably find them, so, I mean, just kind of see what's out there, if, if we want to redo that as a project. You know, whether we say we're gonna nail this down finally in fall, or if somebody needs it midsummer, that, I don't know. I have a timeline, so if people can go.
Talking about allowing them, or outlawing them, or what?
Just continuing on with that, I don't, I don't think we should outlaw them, because it's, I mean, if, if to the east they're doing it, we should be about the same. I don't think they're allowed in the villages in Florida, but this is not the villages. To keep it light. But anyways, I mean, if we want a timeline when we should be doing some investigating, read, read what you have, and seeing what other cities have for it, even as their, their, their wording.
So, just, I can give you a little update on that, because I just kind of went through this in other community. Most of the cities that allow, that allow them, and most of them do allow them, but they're typically in industrial areas, and they act as, like, storage. They put limits on the number of them that you can have, potentially, depending on the district. Now, if it's heavy industrial, and you got 50 of them back there, it doesn't seem to be a big deal, but they're not typically allowing, and as a permanent structure, it's more like an outdoor storage or a temporary type of storage unit.
Temporary 50 years?
Well, I mean, it depends on where it's at. If you're in an industrial area and you got storage out back, that's typically where they're being allowed, and then they're typically need to be screened from.
What, is it industrial and not commercial? Is that what you're saying, or?
Um, commercial allows them in some instances, but mostly it was industrial, so. In the case that we were doing it, they allowed it as permanent structure, but like I said, this guy's putting in footings and all, you name it, into this thing, so he's really going all out with it.
Slightly trendy, and.
Yeah, he's kind of going down that trendy road.
And before we have something running away, we should maybe look at it.
We use containers at our commercial business in another city.
What is the business? I mean, now, what's the name of it? What do they do?
We sell UTVs, snowmobiles.
Oh, ATVs, UTVs, ATVs, okay.
So, it's, it stores. And we have quite a few.
I have nothing against storage, I mean, as far as, I just, what I am looking at is looking at it.
Well, what I'm looking at is making it all work for everybody, you know, if you got, you got ATVs, you can, and if they're running, especially, you can get you get 10 side-by-sides and something like that, or eight of them?
I, I'm not sure of the count of.
But I mean.
And there, I do just know that one of our locations.
It keeps them out of the weather, and I mean, there's different, they are practical, and I mean, if you look around, are yours painted one color?
I have not paid that much attention, but I think they're gray. They're not like a orange mirsque one, or, you know.
The one I said that a car dealership, it's this, it's the exterior color of the whole, of the main structure.
Yeah, I got, I got nothing against something like that, but there's a green one, and a yellow one, and a black one, and a.
But we already say, like, has to be.
Supposed to be already screened.
Screened or structurally.
It's not technically a structure, so it's supposed to access outdoor storage, which means it's supposed to be screened.
There, for a while, they were using truck trailers for storage and parking them all over the place, which we have one of those in town, too, that I'm sure if you'd move it an inch, it'd fall apart, but we won't go into that.
I would almost go with exterior color versus the fence. Or screening and stuff. Well, this, I think it's, uh,
I think you're covering.
It's gonna be, I think we definitely have to go in the deep, deeper, to make everybody happy, because it's.
Yeah.
Just something to be aware of.
No, I knew it was gonna come up within, you know, but anyways, yeah.
The future, the future is here.
Tomorrow, might be.
Maybe you should have a conversation about the ordinance.
Pardon me?
Maybe you should have a conversation about the ordinance with the person.
We should have a conversation about ours.
You should.
I, what?
You should.
I was kidding.
I am having.
I'm kidding.
That'd be on the clock.
Speaking of storage containers, I have one there for, um, the doors come down, and a lot of glass coming in, just temporary storage, so it doesn't get dry.
Oh, that, that I looked at as construction storage.
No, that's not my point, but, um, but exterior, I was looking to get the permission to start the exterior, and my council, so does planning have to prove that first, the glass and doors?
No, like, of the structure itself? Well, no, the only thing that would be needed is, once this goes through council, what is it, next Monday or whatever? Then, yeah, is it two Mondays?
22nd is the next meeting.
Okay, whatever that date is, then, then this is approved, you just have to get your building permit, you know. So, yeah, so we've got, somewhere we've got, yeah, here they are, the, the building plans, and it had some exterior stuff on it, so we've already got that information, that's addressed in the report. Yep, so we're all good there.
Okay, so just to finish this up, is something we should complete in six months to re, relook at the, the final date, or otherwise it'll carry on for another two years, but fall project, winter project? Or this container to update that if we had to, or whatever?
I think, I think at the next meeting where we talk about having commissioners come on board and the interest in that, we could wrap the discussion on containers and begin it there as well. Not saying we'll conclude it one night, but it can, it can start there.
We just keep discussing, throwing ideas around, because I think it's a rather in-depth conversation, it could be.
I'll definitely send out a link to the code, so everybody can get access to it.
Okay. So, anything else on commissioner's report? Thank you, Les, for bringing that up. Commissioner Han? Les Nessman?
Well, I noticed that there's a lot of times when we have variances on number of trees that are planted, and, for instance, Mr. Quas' situation. And it's come up almost every time. And there was, and I'm under the impression that when there is issues where this subject matter comes up a lot, it would be time to amend the ordinance.
Well, you want to get rid of the tree requirement, you're saying?
Well, either get rid of it or change it.
Because I think with the industrial district, we got rid of the landscaping requirement quite a few years ago. But I think the tree requirement stayed at that time. Because what it states is, they can be planted on, say, a park or somewhere else, wherever they might be needed on public property.
Is the fire station, is that downtown, or is that something else?
Owned for downtown, correct.
Kind of, well, with Les, I think it's kind of hard to plant a tree on downtown.
Well.
I'm thinking buildings up to the curb and. Pardon?
How many trees can you plant in a perk, you know, I mean, it's, you know, you have another perk, I guess. But anyway, but anyway, maybe reduce the number, or drop it.
In downtown anyways, if it's not feasible.
The downtown requirement is one tree for every thousand square feet of building area. I think this building was roughly 4,800 square feet, so that was the five-tree requirement.
Yeah, I don't know.
Cannot be accommodated on site. The plinings can be placed in a city park or city right-of-way. The placement of any landscaping shall be approved by city council.
I don't understand why the square footage of a building would determine the amount of trees you plant on a lot.
That's just what the ordinance states.
I know, but that's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I mean, industrial parks, park is one thing, but downtown, it's.
It's almost impossible.
On downtown.
And the way that DNR is burning down trees in the forest don't matter, anyway.
If we're bringing up the storage containers, do you want to bring up the, the language regarding trees as well?
Yeah.
I'll send that, too.
Looks like we might have a meeting in May.
Anything else on number eight?
No.
No.
Sure, Les? Well, you can save that, we got a long one.
I'd like to make an emotion to adjourn.
I'm gonna second that.
So, number nine, adjournment, we already have a motion made before we got to number nine.
We don't want to fight over this, girls.
All in favor, say aye, was there? Was there a second on that? I'm sure there was.
Yeah, zero.
That's what I thought. God, do we have to really?
It was actually two of them.
Opposed? Motion carries, right? You counted?
I was gonna say, no.
Did you have something else that was Dallas kind of?
Last one can get anything else, you can.
I think there's, I think there's a lot of.